So we'll call this committee of the whole to order and we'll turn it over to Briggs as our 2024 communications plan.
Sure, thank you Chair. Good morning Commissioners. Over the past year, myself and Jessica Sade, who is now in a, well, I believe now in a communications role over at HHS, we've been developing our communications plan and we kind of wanted to walk you through the discovery process, but then also kind of what we've come up with. But then also, we wanted some consultation with you all on the implementation of the priorities for this communications plan. There we go. Just a little bit of context for the process. As I made mention, we started back in October of 2023. Back then, we really created the outline for what we wanted the end product to be and also the process we wanted to take ultimately. We consulted that with management team and also communications committee as well, and from there, we took the ball and ran with it. We began in January after things kind of settled down from the rebranding process. We started with 12 department discovery meetings between January to May, and then from May to June, we had a public survey in which we received about 64 responses. And then in June of this year, we reviewed all the discovery materials from those responses, but then also those discovery meetings that we had with the respective departments. And then just last month, we did a planning of the communications priorities, which we'll touch base on here in a second. And then this past, well, and then this month itself, we consulted the priorities with the communications committee, but then also management team as well. For next steps, we're conducting this committee of the whole for a little bit of information sharing, and then our hope is for the board to approve this communications plan on September 3, and that will really set the stage for where communications goes moving forward in the upcoming years. For the discovery process itself, internally, we asked questions regarding kind of asset inventory. So what tools or mediums do departments currently utilize in terms of wanting to communicate out to the public? If they had any plans for communication, formal plans or informal plans? We also asked if there's any benchmarking, or if there's any government entities in which they've seen are, that are similar to their own size that they've seen that are doing things correctly, and if so, what are they doing and how are they doing it? But then also, just a little bit more about the practices about how are they communicating out to the public? When are they communicating out to the public? But then also, the stakeholders involved with those communications as well. For external communications, we asked, we asked the public, what kind of county managed mediums or tools, so social media, or if it be the website, are they interacting with the most? But then we also wanted to know what kind of non-county mediums they were interacting with as well, and we found out some interesting, interesting data from that question, if you will. We also wanted to hear about kind of topics that they're interested in from being communicated from the county's perspective, but then also, if they utilize social media, if they don't utilize social media, and if they do, what kind of platforms are they on? We also wanted to hear some ratings as to how we're doing in communicating to the public, and then ultimately, we collected some demographics on those that were participating in the survey as well. The findings from those discoveries, discovery meetings, but then also the public survey as well, we found that 45% of county-related information is actually being shared via word of mouth, which makes it a primary form of communication. It's actually the third most used form of communication for county information, according to those that took that public survey, which is far more than I think we had thought it would be. But then also, topics of interest are split widely amongst varying departments and offices. And then also, on that public survey, we had asked for people to rate, to rank us on a scale from 1 to 10, how we were doing in terms of informing residents of the benefits, but then also the services that we provide, and we were ranked 4.25 out of 10, meaning we do have a lot of room for growth in terms of informing the public as to the services and benefits that we do provide. But then, another kind of nice thing is that we're already mostly in line with the social mediums that our community prefers the most. They typically prefer Facebook, Instagram, but then also, the one thing that we are growing on is YouTube, but a lot of our community members prefer to hear information on YouTube as well. And then, oh, thank you. But then also, all departments have varying rationales when it comes to internal communications, and we'll touch base on that in a second as well. Do you have anything to share, Jessica?
No.
Okay. Just, this is just a note about the forming of the next couple of slides. What you'll see emboldened in a bright color is the priority itself, which is the main goal. Anything below that is a strategy, which is just the plans in order to reach that priority, and then tactics below that as well. And there's a little bit more, a little bit more elaboration on these priorities in the plan, in the draft plan itself, which is attached in your packets at the bottom of this presentation. And so if you're really interested in one priority, you can go into the bottom and you can read a little bit more thoroughly about the strategy and also the tactics we'll use to accomplish those priorities. The first priority is to lead more strategic communication efforts. We want to be partnering with our external stakeholder groups and agency for information sharing, whether that be in stakeholder meetings or, or focus groups, or if it is to form a joint information center. This is more of a crisis communications term, but really what it means is that you bring as many partners to the table and you have an open conversation about communication that needs to be shared out. So we try to work with any kind of local government agency, be it a school, be it a town, be it the township themselves as well, and we try to make kind of a better web of information sharing, if you will. So if we needed something, share it out, we could ask them to share it out, and they would do so in time, but then also vice versa. If they needed something, share it out in a timely manner, we would do so for them as well. We also just want to increase external communication. Well, we also want to reach out and have more information sharing with external communication medium operators, so that includes radios, newspapers, and magazines. We work with them quite well right now, but we think that there's still more, much more that we could do to create a better relationship with them long-term. We also want to increase the visual communication efforts as well, be it in flyers or signage. We know that a lot of people, as we touched base earlier, share information via word of mouth, and we know that sometimes they may not be seeking that information from a digital platform, but rather something they see if they're walking into a VFW, for example. So increasing signage, I think, can accomplish that for the, for the county. And then also just ultimately establish more outreach efforts. We get a lot of ground traffic, but we also get a lot of information sharing going when we're at the fair, for example, and I think three of you were there, so you were able to see how we were able to communicate with the public, be it from veteran benefits to talking about the cleanup days. We have a lot of information sharing that occurs just word of mouth. Priority two, we want to increase community awareness of county services and programs. We want to start with a well-informed workforce. We were thinking of creating a more ambassador program, if you will, kind of through our communications committee, asking for employees to be the voices, well, to be the eyes, ears, but then also the supporters, if you will, on the ground for the county. So if they're hearing that there's something on the county that's important to the community, relaying that back to us so we can may be able to communicate out effectively and efficiently about that manner, but then also letting them be the cheerleaders of the county as well. So if there's something going on well here, that they can voice that. Yeah, Commissioner Flanders?
Does anybody do that now?
Besides myself, no.
Not as a job, but yes. So a lot of our staff members are also on different boards, commissions, and coalitions and that kind of thing. So being a part of the, and being at the table, many times, we are talking about the different programs that we have, even if that meeting isn't specific to that. And so, we are doing that, but we're not all doing that consistently with the same message. And many times, when members of the public interact with the county, they're interacting for a reason. So they're coming to land use for a permit variance, whatever, or they're going to finance to pay their bills. And so, a lot of times, when we say we are staff from the county, they might think about it in the way that they interact with the county, and that doesn't give a full view of what services we provide overall for, as a whole county agency instead. So many times, many members of the public, what we've heard, I should say, think of us as the resources or the reason that they interact with us. And so this is also providing a larger view of who we are as a government agency and all the different services that we provide. And so, being able to provide our staff with more of that knowledge, so then they're able to say not only what they might do for a job, but also be able to answer questions and connect people from our, the members of our public with the different areas of our agency and the different services we provide.
That also feeds perfectly into the next point, which is county 101 classes. I mean, we are a wide agency, and we find that a lot of individuals might not know what another department does. So creating classes, that's a little bit more information sharing. So I know a little bit more about the day-to-day of a deputy over in the sheriff's office, and they know a little bit more about my day-to-day. So if someone were to come up to me and have questions about what's happening over in the sheriff's office, I could answer in an efficient manner and vice versa. We also want to establish frontline point of contacts. We already have a lot of these, but we want to kind of just embolden them, if you will. Be it from front desk staff to outreach or for search engine optimization, we realize that a lot of these people are the first point of contacts for members of the public, and so making sure that they are knowledgeable in everything county-wide, but then also that they know all the services and programs that we offer. So if a member of the public inquires, they can answer so efficiently and on point. Three, excuse me. We want to strengthen current communication channels. We just want to increase following on our virtual communication tools, so be that if they're subscribing to the notify me on the website, so they get information whenever we share news or announcements, or if it be on social media, we think that that's really important to increase those followings. We also made mention earlier about our external communication medium operators, but we want to deepen those partnerships with it being external media. We think that there's a lot of benefit long-term for the county, but also for local news as well, if we can create more reliable and more up-to-date news of what's happening in the county. And then we also just want to evaluate our current social media accounts. We have a variety of social media accounts out there, and we want to make sure that they're all in tune with what the, with what the public is seeking from us, but also what the public is expecting from us as well. Priority four, this is kind of a new priority for the county, and I think you've seen this as of late, especially with the passing of the LEP policy. But we want to develop more accessible communications, so that really starts with an evaluation of our current communications. You don't know what you don't know, as, as some staff has said before. And we want to partner with the LEP policy working group, and we just met, I think it was yesterday, actually, yeah, for our first meeting, so we'll have some upcoming meetings where we can ask for recommendations on best practices for accessible communications, and then ultimately implement those recommendations. Priority five, we want to clarify agency-wide internal communications. We know that internal communications is not a staple of small county government, but really, how we communicate internally can either hinder, or can help, or can benefit how we operate as a whole. And so, when discussing with all the different departments, their logic and their rationale for communicating internally with all staff or specific staff, we found that there is a lot of different, there's a lot of varying rationales, and so we want to clarify those. So we want to seek out counties of our sizes, be it in Minnesota or around the country, and see what they do for internal communications, so establishing those benchmarks, but then also identify potential for us to increase more effective and efficient internal communication. So we'd probably put together an internal survey and ask for our employees to give us feedback on what's working effectively, how do they prefer to be communicated with, but then also, what's not going well, and how are we missing the mark? So that way, when we do communicate internally, we're not missing them, and they are aware of what's going on within the county, and they feel a little bit more included on some of the decisions being made. And then last, this is left a little vague, but it's just to provide measurements of progress and success. I mean, we can plan all we want, but if we don't know how it's going, then what's really the point? So this is just a little bit of an overview of those six priorities we touched base on, but what we were hoping for today is really to kind of seek direction from the board, kind of on the ordering of the implementing. We cannot implement all these priorities at once. I wish I had a magic wand and it was done by this afternoon, that'd be fantastic, but unfortunately, I'm so limited in my abilities. So we were kind of seeking a little bit of direction from you all. Are there any preferences from the board as to which priorities they think should be implemented first, or should be put on the back burner moving forward?
Comments from the board, go ahead.
I've got a question in general, maybe somebody can help me out, but trying to look at what, some of this stuff seems like it's a, somebody has identified a problem, I don't know if it came from the board. Identify the solution more, now we're going to solve the problem. So I'm looking at all this, and it seems overly generic, so can you help me understand what it is we're doing, or give me some actual real-world examples of what, what happened, what occurred to what we're doing? I honestly don't know.
Yeah.
What, what this is, what are we doing?
That's fair. Overall, there's no strategy to how we're communicating with the public. So what's happening right now is that I'll get a random request from the finance department in order to put something up somewhere, and it might just be to check a box off of a, off a list somewhere. There's no strategy. So we might be putting something out into the ether, hoping that someone from Kenyon is picking up what we're putting down, and that's just not the case. This is to provide strategy to communicate with the public in a more effective manner.
Give examples.
Us.
Sheriff's Department has, you know, they have a face, I'm just trying to look at what. I mean, some of this stuff seems like if we're, if we made a decision as a board, I don't know that we did, it seems like a decision the board should have started with and said, "We need to implement," and I have, nobody's ever come to me and said, "I'm not getting my full use out of the county." You know, what programs or something they have or offering? I'm just, I'm looking for a specific example of what, you know, we've, the veteran services, okay? They're specific, point to them, they're out, they're doing the outreach with all the veterans, they're going out in the county of VFW, okay? Specific programs, specifically what they do to reach the people that they're there to serve. 4H, we have hired additional people, they're going to the schools, they bring us a program to reach the individuals in the schools. We've hired additional staff to help implement those programs, specifically getting out to do that. Is this just overarching of, I, I'm trying to, can you specific, you say finance has something to check, what would that be? What have, Lucas, what have you needed to get out into the, I, I'm just, what is it?
I'll give an example. Different times during the election cycle, we reach out and make sure that we're proactively posting things about deadlines, or when absentee voting's going to start, that kind of a thing, so that gets posted out on our social media that, in those types of accounts. So our, otherwise, we have reminders going out related to tax payment due, due dates, those deadlines, to make sure, just as a friendly reminder to members of the public, hey, make sure you bring your tax payments in, that kind of a thing.
Is that done through the mail too, or is that just done through social media?
These items specifically are done through the social media accounts through, so through Facebook, Instagram, that kind of thing.
How are we looking at changing that, I guess?
Sorry, sorry. I should clarify. I just picked on finances because I saw Lucas, and he was the first department. I, so, I apologize, Lucas, I didn't mean to throw you under the bus in that regard. So there's two examples I'd probably want to pick up, is the first is broadband, is something that we're working on right now. So in Welch, there's no effective manner to which we can reach out to everyone in Welch and ask for them to do what we've been asking them to do. In short, we're asking them to go to a website and take a speed test for their internet. We can post on a social media and hope that someone in Welch actually has internet to go onto Facebook and see that we are asking them to do that, or we could work strategically with the townships themselves and ask, hey, are there emails? You have a listserv in which we can push that information out. Right now, that's just, we're just coming up with this on the fly. There's no strategy, there's no, there's no long-term goals. And so what this is, is that it's setting a strategy in place and saying, okay, you want to reach out to Welch about broadband, follow these routes, and this is how to do so effectively. We're setting in stone a couple of different relationships that'll make future communication efforts a little bit easier. So no one's coming to you, I think, because I think they just don't know what is offerable. We've also heard from veterans at the fair, from Kenyon area, actually, that they didn't even know that we had a veteran services office, because we haven't done that outreach, because they haven't heard from the county themselves. So there are a lot of people out there that I just don't think know the services or benefit, or programs that we offer, because we haven't had a strategic look about our communications. I know Jess also wanted to jump in with an example.
And also, just in regards to, we, as a county, we do not have a communications plan yet. So with that being said, a lot of it is different department heads that are doing different things, and that has worked for their departments. An example being is also, technology is moving forward. So when I first started, we weren't able to have a Facebook page. Now, Facebook and social media is a part of our everyday page. Well, with that comes, one, legal aspects of what can county government do on social media, et cetera. So through the years that I have been here, in my 10 years of communication, we have had to create policies around social media, we have had to create policies of both what can, what are, what the expectations of the public when interacting with our social medias, but also, as staff, what are the expectations when we have staff administering our social media pages? When can they get in trouble, when can they not? I mean, all of the different aspects of what are our expectations of for our staff. And with the technology that is coming out, with the new technology, we consistently are now putting in different guidelines and policies in place, so that everybody understands, both the public and also our staff, understand what we are expecting of them. So in the 10 years that I have been here, like I said, social media was not a thing, and it's definitely not a thing that we were allowed to do as government. And now, of course, I can't imagine a world without Facebook. That's just, and that is how, especially, I would say, in the last four or five years, social media has been a huge way of us getting notifications out to our public about different things. Example being when there was the release of chemicals within our lakes, and all of a sudden, lakes were, you know, lake use was not there. Well, guess what? We had 80,000 shares of our, one of our Facebook pages about that, because it was something that went out into our community. So it is a way of getting information out to our public. So with this being said, the fact that we don't have, that there isn't strategic plans in place to get communication out, means, one, we might be missing certain members of our public with our communication efforts, and two, example being that everybody goes on social media, so know what, we need to make sure that we're still using print resources. We need to still make sure that we are reaching out to the public in ways that they can, and in different mediums that are available to them as well. So it's really hard to find government, county, and state, and above, that do not have communication plans, because thinking about, especially for the size of our county, we want to make sure that we are doing our role of, as a government agency, to make sure that we are providing not only ways for us to communicate with our members of our public, but also providing ways for our members of our public to communicate with us. So that is where this is coming from. Having a communication plan is definitely not something that is a nuanced, new thing that has never happened in government. It's actually something that is extremely surprising that we have not, in the many years that this government has been around, that we do not have a communications plan. That's actually more surprising than the other way.
So, follow-up on what Briggs was saying. Yes, trying to get the information out to Welch about what they had to do to get broadband and contest the map, of which the map at the state level said, yes, Welch has broadband, but they, if you listen to the people, they don't. And therefore, they had 30 days to go get a speed test, and then get a letter from the service provider, that the service provider could not give them broadband speeds that were required, to be part of that $652 million that's coming to the state of Minnesota for broadband. So that was part of the problem, was there was no real way to get it out to people, and...
Probably that would have had to be snail mail, really.
Pardon?
Probably it would have had to go through the regular post office.
I don't think we did go through the regular post office, no. I made flyers and took them out and drove them around and stuck them in mailboxes.
And then the post office was unhappy with that.
Yes, they, yeah, to find out that the post office doesn't want me to, because I'm not an employee. But that was part of it. It's how do I get the information out to the people in Welch, that they have to do this, and the individual had to do it, and yet it was, and then they had to report to the county, because it's only the county that could actually apply for the money. So it was like there was absolutely no way to make it happen. And you only had 30 days to file the challenge. That was extremely frustrating, as to how do you do that? Now, the city of Red Wing does have, I think it's a weekly newsletter that comes out electronically, where they have all the news of the city that you can sign up for, and they hit the highlights, but I mean, that's a very nice piece of information for somebody living in Red Wing to get, because I don't make it to all the meetings. And so they give the highlights, and then more information as to, you know, what you can click to get more information. I do want to say one thing, but while we still have time though, and that was about the county fair. After one of our, after the meeting, went up to get fair food, and while I was waiting, a woman came running up next, "Ken, Ken, I gotta tell you, the county is doing the greatest thing. They've got a bingo card for you to go all over the park, the fair." So I did want to compliment you or whoever did, came up with the bingo idea, that it was definitely something that somebody said, "We've got to do that next year too." They said it for their, yeah. So anyway, well done.
For me to look at this and say, what would I suggest? I'm gonna throw that back to you too. I, this is, you know, I, yeah. Yes, where do you see the priorities? I, I know you've put them here now, and I'm asking for my input, but I, I'm sorry, but this is tough for me to say what is the best.
Ed, go ahead.
I would say that, one, we absolutely positively need a strategic communication effort, and then go down to number six, we also have to know beforehand, what are the measurements of progress and success? So if you're going to do something, how are you going to measure it right from the start, so that if it's not working, get rid of it? If it needs to be adapted, adapt it, and if it's working, then by all means, run with it. So that's my two cents worth.
No, I just have a question. How many people participated in the survey? Was it, I think you said?
It was about 64.
Yeah, and how, how, how did we try to reach people with the survey?
We primarily were on social media at that point.
Okay. So the people who aren't on social media aren't going to have responded to the survey?
That's correct. We did push out a press release. We asked for news to pick it up as well. We, I don't think any of the news picked it up sadly.
Yeah. That was my question.
I suppose I gave you absolutely no way forward, is that correct?
Well, we got, we got some direction. We can work with that.
And I, I don't know, I mean, I'm speaking as an individual, not as an expert on this, but if there's something that I need to find, the first thing I do is to go to their website.
Yep.
And if the website would then direct me to the social media or the Facebook, you know, whatever, then I might go to that, but I'd start with going to finance's website or whosever.
See, and I understand that, but I mean, so for example, I have a couple of friends that, I'll actually pick up my roommate, if you will. My roommate's main source of news is TikTok. And so if they're curious about something, their first source is that they'll go to TikTok and they'll look it up and they'll search, and if, if they find resources there, that's how they, that's how they embrace that, that resource. And so, everyone has different ways of information gathering, and so I think we need to respect that. I mean, some people will immediately go to a newspaper first, and so what this is, is that we're trying to reach people where that at, and this is really where that communications plan is coming into play.
So how do we get more information about where our people are actually seeking the information? So if you went to the Jordan Towers or the apartment, low-income apartments, I don't know, where they're seeking their information. We don't, we don't even know that.
We don't have any, I wouldn't say we have any hard evidence within the county, but I mean, anecdotal evidence, I would suggest that a lot of people have subscribed to their city's newsletters. So if you're in a city, typically, they're in touch with them, or if you're in a township, typically, you know who your supervisors are, and if you have an email that gets sent from your supervisor, you might be a little bit more inclined to open it. So there are already, there are already lines of communication that people have embraced that we can tap into through some of those joint information, joint information center kind of relationships. So that's kind of where the strategic efforts come into play, is that we can tap into those more reliable communications, and people can come to learn to embrace our communications as reliable, trustworthy, but also useful as well.
It does seem to me, one of the things you have on here is strengthening, or clarify agency-wide internal communications. It does seem to me a bit logical that we would do internal and have some kind of a strategic plan there before we went external, if you're looking for, you know, a direction as to what you do first, but otherwise, probably leave it in your hands. But it just seems like internal would be a good idea before we focus on external.
Great. Anything else?
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
If you have some direction, thank you for all the work you put into it.